The meeting has been called to order. We're going to stand for our Pledge of Allegiance. We thank each and every one of you for coming out on this evening. It's wonderful to see so many people out on a somewhat rainy Wednesday evening. The summer's coming to a head and soon we'll be back in school and I know there's probably a ton of things that each and every one of you could be doing, so we super appreciate you coming out to this public hearing, regular board meeting. At this time, we're going to adjourn out of our regular board meeting into the public hearing, and we're going to start with... So, is there a motion to adjourn out of the public hearing?
So moved.
Excuse me, out of the regular meeting into the public hearing?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So at this time, we're going to be calling forth Mr. Hodge, the Assistant Superintendent of Safety and Athletics to conduct a meeting, a presentation on the Code of Conduct. Mr. Hodge?
Thank you. Good evening. So tonight, we're going to do our annual public hearing related on the Code of Conduct, and then after the Code of Conduct, we'll move into the District-wide Safety Plan.
One of the things, just before Mr. Hodge speaks, given that it's a public hearing, feel free, the microphones, we're gonna have the microphones available once he's finished, and questions the public can ask, whatever questions you like.
So first of all, the Poughkeepsie City School District is definitely committed to maintaining high standards for education for students in our schools, and the district is also committed to creating and maintaining a high behavioral standards and expectations for everyone. That also includes our staff, our students, the public. So basically, this is a mandated, and you'll see later on in the presentation, all of the different sections, this is mandated by the state that we have a Code of Conduct that covers all those areas. So basically, if you take a look at it, this is also will be on the webpage for you to take a look at. We basically are covering, we want to have an orderly educational environment that requires everyone in the school community to play a role in contributing to having an effective environment for our students. And to this end, a high degree of parent-school communication will be fostered by the school. That's one of the things that you'll see at the end of this presentation, that as we move into our next steps moving forward, we have something in place to be able to have more of our community at large, and more people even in our school community involved in the process of our student Code of Conduct. Oh, and going back, I do want to highlight that this is a shared responsibility between the school, the home, and our community. So this is taking you through the major elements of the Student Code of Conduct, and as you can see, they cover pretty much a lot of areas that are related to schools. You see the first section here, definitions, you've heard these bullying, cyberbullying, defamation, discrimination, disruptive student, gender. Moving into Student Bill of Rights, which is the rights of students, the responsibilities of students, and the roles of our parents and guardians, and also the role of school personnel. More of the student rights. And there's 12 major elements that you have to have in your Code of Conduct. So as you can see, moving down to the way we report our violations, DASSA, the Dignity for All Students Act, the way we deal with student suspensions, dress and grooming, computer use, transportation, extracurricular activities, and discipline with students with disabilities. Some of the major things this year, the major revision this year in our Student Code of Conduct that we will be recommending to the school board, and these revisions came from our SAVE Committee. And every school district is charged with having a SAVE Committee that has representation from pretty much all elements of a school environment, teachers, staff, administrators, parents, students. And the major revision this year, as you can see there, is the, it's under Section 8, which is the wearing of durags, skull caps, headbands, or similar head adornments. That is the major revision that came from the SAVE Committee from this past year. Now, looking at our, looking on to our next steps, one of the things that we really want to have is we really want to have a transparent process that's inclusionary, collaborative, we want the entire community to be involved. So one of the things that we're looking at, to develop the Student Code of Conduct Task Force for the 2021 school year. So we're gonna be actually beginning this process, and in the next slide, I'll get to that. The task force will include central office administration, building-level administration, students, parents, and community-based organizations. And I believe if you bring all those people to the table, we should really be able to get a good forecast, have some solid feedback on really what we should have in our Student Code of Conduct. And also, when you have all of those folks involved in that process, they're gonna have, probably have a little more buy-in to what we're presenting for our students. And the task force will meet during the 1920 school year. We'll also gonna be incorporating two public community forums, that we're gonna have one on one side of the city, and then the other on the other side of the city, to be able to offer parents and people from the community come in to give their feedback, then we will take that feedback back to our task force and take a look at it to see where we can put that in, if possible. And then our goal is to be able to update the Code of Conduct and present that to our Board of Education by June of 20. So hopefully, by the time we leave school, we'll have a recommendation into the school board for our Student Code of Conduct for the 2021 season. So the engagement timeline for that, if you can take a look at this, it's basically October through June, we're gonna be having task force meetings, and we're also gonna be having the public forums there. At Warring is gonna be the first public forum in November, the second public forum will be at the middle school, and then we're also gonna do something, we're gonna add two weeks of public feedback online. We're gonna have information online for people to be able to give feedback for the Student Code of Conduct, as well as we're gonna have paper, in some form of a paper survey or something at each building, so parents can actually turn that in, and we will take all of that feedback, bring that back to our task force, and we should have a lot of feedback to be able to present a strong student conduct recommendation to the school board. Hopefully for a June 2020 board approval. So here again is just in another forum, it's just the timeline for our activities for our Code of Conduct. Any questions? Yes. So our recommendation is that we do not want durags.
No, excuse me, can you please, she needs a microphone so that the question can be...
Sorry, it wasn't clear to me from how the policy is changing to whether we are now going to allow durags or not.
So that was the major revision that was on there, is the elimination of durags.
Mr. Hodge, can you repeat that?
The major revision on Section 8 is that we will, we are asking to remove the use of durags, headwear, other adornments in school.
This is for males and females?
For males and females.
So, girls will not be able to wear scarves or any headwear?
No scarves, no bonnets. Obviously, if there's a medical situation, they would be able to, or a religious situation, they can be able to wear that. But that would be approved by the school administration prior to.
And this decision, I want to be clear, because just a year ago, the committee came to the board with the recommendation to implement this, and now a year later, so is there data to substantiate it? What is the issue? Because there were board members, some of us were not in agreement with it last year, but based upon the recommendation, we supported it.
Well, according to, according to the feedback that we had from our administrators that were in on the SAVE Committee, they didn't have any knowledge of how it got removed from, how it got added that you could not wear, that you could wear headwear.
Trustee Long, didn't you serve on that committee?
I did.
Can you, were there administrators?
That was the information that we were given in our SAVE Committee.
Okay, but trustee Long was not a part of that committee, so for me, it's not support or anti, I just wanted to be sure. Were there administrators in that last year when it was presented to us, to you?
Yes, it was.
Because they were in, pretty much consensus that they did not want to see headwear.
Yeah, well, my concern, I'm concerned with, not so much with durags, but with girls wearing scarves and the attendance issue, because I think that was some of the premise, that some things are cultural, and the inability for some girls not to even be able to wear scarves, and I don't know, I don't know, I'm just throwing this out here, that that could pose a real problem when it comes to attendance, and that's something that we've been really focused on, trying to get our attendance up, and so if that poses an issue.
The attendance piece didn't come up in our group.
I think it should come up in a big way.
Dealing with scarves for the girls.
Absolutely, with scarves. And I think there's teachers here in this building that know that scars, and I'll be specific, especially for black girls especially, that that's an issue, and so if you're telling me, and I get tight on, and I get it, and if we do it for one group, and then for the other, I get all of that, but I think that there needs to be clear, we have to go into all things with our eyes wide open, and I know this board seeks data to substantiate whatever's being said, because we were here last year, and as individuals, it's not necessary for us to state where we stood, however, the entire board supported it based upon the information that was given to us, and we want to make sure that whatever shift is taking place now, that it makes, one, good business sense, that's the first thing, too, is that it makes sense when we look at culture and cultural competency, and then three, that there is the equity factor. So I do know, as a black woman, that that is an issue with girls coming to school, and I know that I've been in the high school and the middle school many times, and I see numerous girls with scarves on. So if we're going to say that we're gonna take scarves away from them, I think that that may pose a problem, and I would like to throw it out to some of our teachers that are sitting in the audience.
Or administrators?
Yes, there's some that are there. And again, this isn't for me as an individual, I'm not swaying either way, I'm looking at things realistically.
I apologize for not standing, I have a cast on my leg. But as an administrator of the high school, I understand culturally, I do, and I do appreciate how we need to be sensitive to that. But I also see the other side, that we see a lot of girls in fights, because they do this thing where they take their scarves off, tighten it up, wrap up their head, it's kind of like a warning, like, "I wanna fight you, we're gonna have a fight." And we see a lot of girls, and this happens with the girls, they wrap their hair right before they're ready to start a fight. And once they see that hair getting wrapped up, then we see other girls, and they know what's going to happen. So that's what we have to deal with, is this sign that they use their scarves to initiate a fight. So that's a concern I have. I do appreciate, and I'm sensitive to the cultural aspect, but we're also looking at preparing them for when they go out into the community and try to get jobs. There are some places, the durags we've already taken care of, but once we start with a scarf, then there's all kinds of things that we have to deal with, and then why is it fair for girls to wear headgear and not the boys? Sometimes the boys have a bad hair day also.
Well, that's exactly what I'm saying, is that for us, as an individual board member, and as a black woman, I am very much aware of that, and I understand it. So whatever way, and that's why I say data are king, data substantiates what you're doing, that it should not just be done because you're saying that if they're using the headscarves as a symbol for fighting, they can use anything, it could be a pin on their ear to say, "Okay, that's gonna start a fight," and do we get rid of pins? My point is, as an individual board member, is that we, these decisions, when it comes to the Code of Conduct, that's going to be instituted for an entire year, specific to our young people, is that we do it from a comprehensive, holistic, strategic perspective, and not just happenstance, or from an emotional or from a personal perspective. That is my only point, and to allow data to substantiate it, because what, as an individual board member, what I would have liked to see, given that this board was given information just a year ago, in support of it, with a plethora of reasons why we should support it, and we did support it, and then now, just a year later, we didn't, yet we have no data to substantiate why we're moving away from it, good, bad, or indifferent, were there suspensions, was it they wore other colors, throughout the year, we had these number of incidences specific to it, and that's what I would personally like to see and have data to substantiate it, so that when I vote, my individual vote, that it's done, driven from data, and not just from people's emotional, one person standing, we're swinging the pendulum yet again.
So respectfully speaking, we do face some of the same challenges at the middle school level as well, as administrators, in the fact that it's both male and female students, but with the females, that is the same issue, that when you see them starting, the head wraps getting tied tight, or the bonnets, or the shower caps, and they're putting them on methodically for the purpose of fighting, when we see them getting wrapped up, we know it's about to pop off. So now this becomes a brawl with sometimes in excess of over 100 kids, and we did have a number of issues where students were seriously injured, along with staff members. So what we want to do with equity on both sides of it, both for male and female, in supporting both of them, is reduce the numbers of incidents that we're having by all means. And if that's gonna include eliminating headgear for both male and female students, I mean, that's the purpose of what we're trying to do, is reduce the incidence of behavioral outbursts that are rising up. As far as data goes, the number of insubordination offenses, whether it resulted in either at-the-school detention, if they refused to show up, an in-school suspension, or an out-of-school suspension, some of those numbers do exist on our data platform, but it would be much more so on an insubordination level for refusing to remove the headgear. And that does include with our security.
This is from last year, refusing to remove it?
This is from the 1819 school year.
Yeah, but by policy in the Code of Conduct, they were allowed to wear these things?
No, it was the nine, so there was black durags that were approved.
Okay, so you mean the colors, the other colors?
Right, it was the other color ones, correct. So, and this included our security supervisors as well, with the notifications from them, two students, to remove headgear, and the students refusing to do so. So it did lead to much more insubordination offenses taking place, but then unfortunately, the insubordination offenses brought to larger offenses. So we're trying to really minimize and eliminate a lot of those behavioral interruptions that took place, and some of it unfortunately did stem from the use of wearing the headgear on both sides, both male and female.
And also, that was also brought up in our SAVE Committee meetings, even at the high school, as far as a lot, a ton of insubordination that dealt with, you know, the colors, and then also it got to the females, it got to the point where our females, at least in the high school, started wearing shower caps. And it just became an ongoing, everyday, non-stop, asking kids to, you know, "Take your shower cap off," to the point that some of the kids had to be suspended. You know, I don't have that specific data, but I can tell you that, you know, I'm sure Mr. Parks and Mr. Jackson can get that data for you. They were the ones that basically came strong at the committee, saying, "We don't want durags." That's where that, I mean, headwear, that's where that came from. The thing on the scarves, and another thing that was brought up, it was also brought up, is just basic professionalism. You know, it was brought up, it's not a professional look to have our kids walking through.
Well, I beg to differ with that, that's a whole nother conversation.
Yeah, but they brought up situations with, you know, the durags trying to present more...
Not durags, I'm talking scarves.
Yeah, the scarf, to be totally honest with you, the scarf thing really wasn't an issue, except for the fight issues. Scarves was never really an issue. The reason that we threw the scarves in there was because of those scenarios that we had with the, it was basically a gang sign. That's what it came down to with the scarf. So the girls that are, the girls, there are some girls that are wearing scarves in a normal fashion, norming it, wearing it for, you know, for looks. There are other girls that are wearing it to show a gang sign, and it really turned into, escalated a lot of situations. But as far as, there was a lot of insubordination activities that were...
Again, it would have been good to be substantiated with data, and I can, I don't need to personally say, I don't, personally, I don't support it as an individual, I do understand the cultural competence of it, I get that and those pieces, but again, we cannot, this board cannot make decisions from one year to another based upon, a lot of, what does that mean? And then now to have us swing the pendulum again, because parents, parents, those that support it, or students that support it, then, and then now this year, we will be making another decision, and those who don't support or whatever, of course, it's fine, but those who do support it, it becomes a whole thing. And this board, we would like to substantiate things based upon facts and information.
I wasn't on that committee last year, but was there a committee about that, specific? Like durags or...
A year ago, yes.
Okay.
Just one piece of data, we had an administrators' meeting back in June, then we had one again this week. 100% of the administrators in the district supported that we do not have any headwear for the students. That's one piece of data. 100% of the administrators who come from all different cultural backgrounds, and represented all different cultural backgrounds, all of them stated that they would prefer there would be no headgear. Also, teachers have also said they're a distraction to the educational process in the classroom, because the students are always playing with them, taking them off, putting them on, you know, fixing them up, all that kind of thing. But 100% of the administrators certainly do not want headgear.
Are there any other questions from our audience? Any other questions from the board? Thank you, Mr. Hodge, we can move to the next important presentation.
Yeah, we're gonna move right into our next presentation, which is our District-wide Safety Plan. So, to address emergencies in New York State public schools, New York State Ed has enacted the Safe Schools Against Violence Education Law, which is also, you've probably heard, "save," and this, we also, so we are charged with having a district-wide committee to take a look at this legislation and regulation that was presented by the State Commissioner of Education, and our school board has convened a district-wide safety committee of school community stakeholders, and charged it with the development and maintenance of our District-wide Safety Plan. So every year, by September 1st, the district has to update the District-wide Safety Plan, and for it to be formally adopted by the Board of Education. And it provides the, at least one public hearing, which is here, which will provide opportunity for participation of school personnel, parents, students, and other interested parties to be able to give feedback on our plan. And each building principal, also in each school, each building principal will appoint a building-level emergency team to develop a school-specific building-level emergency plan. And the District-wide Safety Plan, together with our school plans, we have a comprehensive safety plan for Poughkeepsie City School District. So the building-level emergency response plan will be, our plans will then be actually uploaded to all of the state police within 30 days, not all of the state police, but to the state police. So one of the things that we've been working on this summer, some of them have already, I looked on the site this morning, some of them already have been uploaded to the state. You have, I think it's like an October date, but our goal is to have all of our safety plans into the state before school starts. Any questions?
I'll be honest, I would have thought there would have been more information specific to this in a public hearing, specific to the District-wide School Safety Plan, as well as the Building Level Emergency Response Plan.
We do have it, did you want to go through it?
Yes, that's critical for our community. This is a big piece, and by state law, through the state legislation, Safe Schools Against Violence in Education, we're supposed to do that.
Yeah, we have that, I didn't know if you wanted to go through it on here. So this is the District-wide Safety Plan, so when you see the yellow, it's probably more grammatical or typing areas that we work on, as you see, that's just the front page. You see the contents of our safety plan. When we go through it, it has, one of the big key parts of it is you take a look at the introduction. The first introduction that schools are, and basically, this is the truth, school districts are at risk of experiencing acts of violence, natural, man-made disasters, there could be a lot of things that go on, that basically, the school has to have a plan to be able to deal with on a daily basis. So the law, the SAVE law legislation that was presented, basically outlines the areas that we have to have in place to be able to make sure that we have a response for every situation. And copies of all of our board-adopted plan will be kept in the superintendent's office, as well as the office of all district-level administrators, as well as building principals, and this will also be on our website.
So, Mr. Hodge, can you go over the specific areas that our District-wide Plan covers?
Okay.
At a very high level, of course.
Yes, okay. So, reporting acts of violence to authorities. So, basically, it covers all information that in an emergency, police should be contacted by dialing 911. Then, as you see, and from every section, it goes into subsections. So in a non-emergency situation, we'd be calling the city of police, the city of Poughkeepsie Police, the Dutchess County Sheriff's, New York State Police. And also, the following incidents require the involvement of police, and you can see, so any areas for, like commits an act of violence upon a teacher, administrator, or other employee, commits an act of violence to another student, violence to a property, these are the incidents that we will, that we have to dial and call these folks.
And if I could state for the record, you know, particularly for those who may be joining us via the recording, that we as a school district are going to be very vigilant in making sure that our operations for keeping all of our schools safe and secure for learning and instruction is going to be at its highest level. I do have on my agenda, or my calendar, to meet with local law enforcement to talk a little bit more about ways in which we can strengthen our partnership, so that whenever there is an issue that may arise in the city or in the community, that it's brought to our attention, so that we are prepared as a school system to be able to handle and be able to respond to things that may be originating in our community that may then come into our school district. So those conversations will be ongoing throughout the year. Our intent is to, as I mentioned earlier, to strengthen our relationship with local law enforcement, and to be able to have open lines of communication that will enable us to be able to speak freely about certain situations that may originate in the community, or may even originate in our schools, so that we're working in alignment and in concert with one another.
Okay, thank you. So as you can see, like for example here, procedures to responding to a hostage-taking situation. So that information will be in every building, and we have to follow these procedures. We go into, you know, we immediately notify the principal of the hostage-taking, you immediately go to 911, we have, then the order is given for a lockdown. As you go all the way down, you're notifying the superintendent, all the way down.
One of the things, sir, that we 100% have to clean up is spelling. Principal is with an A L, not a E L E.
Yeah, that, okay, yeah, I do see that, yep. This is the, this is the draft. So a lot of that was still here. We haven't, we gotta clean that up.
We gotta clean that up.
Yeah.
So the expectation is that anything that's being provided to the community for their consumption.
Right.
That we do our due diligence with making sure that grammatically everything is correct because we represent an educational institution and we need to exemplify that through everything that we speak and what we also have in writing.
Right.
Another thing I would like to ask, specific to the, uh, to the emergency, uh, response systems, when we look at lockdown, lockouts, shelter in place and all of those and types of things, we want to make sure that, um, training is in place and that these types of things, these drills are implemented. I remember last year, uh, the PIPSA, they complained about that resoundingly, that these measures were not put in place. So we want to make sure. And of course, we, we're under new leadership and I know Dr. Rossler will be, um, really focused on this, is, is ensuring that the drills are taking place in sync, not only with SAVE legislation, but for the edification of this school district. So that should something happen, we know exactly what to do. We will be an automatic pilot versus frantic, versus being frantic.
So I know one of the things that happened here at the high school is after every drill, it's, it also seemed like after every incident, they would have a, we would reconvene with the entire staff to go over the day and the things that happened and the things, the areas that we needed to improve on. So that did, that did happen.
The, the building does have a safety team, correct?
Yes.
And the safety team would meet or just?
The safety team would meet and the, the safety team would meet before school was out. If it was, it was an event that happened during the day, the safety team would meet and then after school, the safety team would come and bring that to the staff.
Okay, just so everything was fresh?
So, so everybody was fresh on it, yes.
Okay.
So they did do that all year. And, you know, we, we get, we get, we get all type of, um, telephone and other verbal threats, you know, especially when it comes to a bomb threat situation. And you have to pay, you know, as you can see here, pay very careful attention, record. It basically gives you a playbook on how to, um, perform the drill, basically. So that's why this has to be updated. This has to be in an area where people can get it readily. And there also has to be backups to the people that are in charge or alternates.
Well, one of the things I'd like to ask is, um, especially given our phone system, which we know is a hot mess. So when you look at bomb threats and those sorts of things and, and, um, from an emergency management perspective, it talks about that, the, the, you know, calls and that sort of thing. Do we have a system in place? Right now, we don't even have central administration, doesn't even have a phone line. Uh, the preponderance of the assistant superintendents that are operating with cellular phones. So do we have measures in place to address some of those?
So one of the things that, that we're going to be hopefully utilizing is we actually do have school messenger. And one of the things that we really need to do, and I've talked to, I've talked to Becky and I've talked to, um, oh, he's not here, Sean, about making sure that we utilize school messenger. So school messenger is a system, I believe it's, is it through Bosse's? That we actually have it. You have to go on and, uh, register your cell phone number and you can use that to, for all type of announcements specifically for, specifically for emergencies. So I think that's, uh, that's something that we really should notify, that we really should be using in our district because we do have some, some kind of pieces missing with our phone system. But that messenger system, it doesn't deal with the phone system. It basically deals with your personal phone.
Uh, I know, um, Dr. Rossler, I don't think you'd be privy to this. I see, um, Ms. Robinowitz, uh, here and I know that there was, we're supposed to have a new phone system or something. So Ms. Robinowitz, can you speak to our community and to the board specific to that and where things stand?
Cheryl, make sure you provide the timeline for when everything is going to be operable.
Sure. So, um, over the summer, we've had cabling done because we had to have cabling done from the new phone system. Uh, they're finishing up PACE, they're finishing right now at the high school, then they're moving up to the middle school. So in order to put the phone system in, which is going to be voice-over IP, cabling had to be done. Uh, we're working through Bosse's who, we've purchased it. And as far as the timeline when everything will be complete, it will be fall. Um, and when I say fall, I can't give you an exact date, but I would say we know, we know for sure that PACE will be done in two weeks. It's, will be complete, it'll be operational. Uh, the high school, they're finishing it up now and then moving to the middle school. After that, it'll be the elementary schools. So we're seeing later fall for the elementary schools, but the start of school should be like September, October, high school and middle school. And meanwhile, we're maintaining our other phone system, which in case people don't know, it's a very old phone system. It's not voice-over IP. It has a lot to do with being with the weather. When the weather is not that great, our phone systems go down. We will not have that at all because it's going to run on our network. It is a really high-quality phone system.
Is the cabling that we see out here in the hallway, is that's what, is that taking place?
That's correct. Because it basically is going to run over our network. It won't run underground. It'll run over our network. It's going to be high-quality phone system.
And Ms. Robinowitz, can you also share with the community that not only is the wiring taking place, but the hardware is being delivered, tested, et cetera?
That's correct. So we have cabling, we have new switches, um, we have new phone systems, we have new UPSs, because that's another thing. When our, when it's bad weather and electric goes out, we want our phones, because they're on our network, to still be on. Um, in addition to, even though it's running on our network, just for emergencies, we also still have the old-fashioned landlines. That, that's a requirement to have in all schools. Should the electricity go out, we still need a phone. So all schools will still have the regular phone, but voice-over IP will be everywhere.
And, and principals are being kept abreast of where things stand so that they know that what alternatives they have to use until the system is in place?
Yes, that is correct. Principals have communicated, they have given us their current phone numbers and their phone extensions, because we want to kind of keep the same extensions and the same phones. Um, and then as we're working in the buildings, we let them know. Our technology staff actually follow the technicians. So if they're going to be in the high school, they let them know in the high school. If they're going to be in the middle school, they let them know. So everyone has been communicated with, either by myself as well as the technology staff.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
So one of the, one of the other areas that's very important is procedures coordinating district resources and manpower during, during emergencies. So we, we will be using, like most districts in the state, an incident command system. And that's basically each, each, there's someone designated as the incident commander. And in most of our, as you can see here, going here, so Dr. Rossler would be our incident commander. Ms. Robinowitz would be our alternate and Mr. Schloica would be our second alternate. And then we have safety officers, as you can see there, monitors the safety conditions and develops measures for assuring that the safety of all response personnel. And that's myself and Mr. Willoughby. And the reason that he's an alternate on there, because he is our director of maintenance. So as, as things develop and need it throughout the district for emergencies, he has to be involved in that.
Excuse me, sir, can you tell me what the level of training has been for these individuals when it comes to emergency management?
So, for example, yesterday, I gave a training to our, um, district administrators related to, um, the safety plan as well as, um, and we, we also did a DASSA. But that's, that's the level of training specifically to the, um, to this district-wide safety plan on their roles and responsibilities.
And Madam Board President, I will also share with you what we are planning for the superintendent conference days next week is that at each school, the building principal will then have the responsibility of sharing the school, the school-based plan with their staff on that first day, on the second day, excuse me.
Uh, and the training that I'm speaking of is not specific to the, the plan itself. It's through NIMS, through FEMA, through, you know, those types of trained emergency management so that, um, I'm, I'm speaking specifically of that type of training, not the, the contents that are in the building-level emergency plan or the district-wide school safety plan.
And I can, let me, so that's going to be part of my responsibility in working with our local law enforcement. To make sure that we as a school district have been trained and are aware of the latest and the most effective practices in dealing with these type of situations from a district level as well as the school level. So part of my conversations with local law enforcement will be to establish those protocols and make sure that I have a comfort level with what we have to be responsible for and what we have to be knowledgeable of is in place in our district.
Excellent. I know last year, I think trustee Clifford, um, I think you were a part of it. I know that members, I see members of PIPSA that there was a training by local law enforcement. They walked through some of the very basic pieces during opening day, during the couple of days of opening day. And I know that the, this place was packed and I know that they were very appreciative of that because it's critical that, I mean, it's a blessing that we haven't had to, I mean, we had a situation where we thought that someone had a gun last year and then before that, the, the Facebook posting piece. But, um, we were so, we were so out of compliance when it came to automatically understanding and knowing what to do. And as an institution, we can't, we cannot be in that situation. We have to, um, be prepared and our staff know processes and know what should be taking place so that we're all on one accord. Because in, and when you're in the middle of a crisis of an emergency, that's not the time to be trying to figure things out. And so it's critical for our institution from the top, from the superintendent all the way down, custodial workers, cafeteria staff, the students themselves, for all of us to be in the know of situations. And I, and I know this sympathically, that last year we were not in the know collectively. And that's something, um, under Dr. Rossler's leadership, we know that there'd be more focus. There's another piece, um, um, Mr. Hodge, for you, it was that I know that Duchess County Bosse's, they also have, uh, a, um, a, a team that meets, a school safety team.
I was just getting ready to say, I'm a member of that. I went to that all last year, yep.
And that, and that's important.
And I also started bringing, um, some of my security monitors with me.
Good.
And we're going to continue that this year.
Excellent.
And we're also going to actually, um, we're going to be joining the National School Safety Alliance Association.
Wonderful.
It's actually a national organization.
Yes.
And I'm also going to be, I'm a member of that now. And I'm also going to bring on some of our safety, um, monitors as well as some administrators. So we'll be getting ongoing professional development as well as a, um, there's a national conference this year, it's in Portsmouth, Virginia. We'll be taking a team from Poughkeepsie to Portsmouth, Virginia to their national conference. And that's something that I, I looked at last year. So this year, we're going to roll that in. And to go back to what Dr. Rossler said, um, one of the things for, for ongoing development on specifically for making sure that the staff is aware of what's going on, that part is very vital from the principal to relay that information as far as when, when, um, schools actually perform their drills, they perform them with fidelity.
Right.
You know, that's, that's really what it comes down to. Because, you know, a lot of times, you know, a lot of people will wait like till the last week of school and try to rush in, um, and that's what we can't do. We have to make sure that we have a plan and everybody knows the drill. So when it really happens, it's seamless.
Right, it's more than just compliance. Exactly. We want to be in the know.
And that Duchess County School Safety Committee was, was very valuable.
Great.
Last year. And, and you'll, you can see this on here, this is again our, um, commanders group where we have operations chiefs, planning, document chief going down, we, you know, everything on there. I probably should have put Chef Dave on there too now that I think about it, because logistics chief, because we could be in a situation where we're, where we're at a, at, we're somewhere for six hours.
Well, that happened with nine 11, for those that
Right.
Remember some of the situation. There were, there were individuals that were, that were sequestered for, uh, 10 to 12 hours during the nine 11. School districts, because down in that area where the schools were, they were sequestered, they could not leave and they were there all day. And, and let me tell you, before that, there wasn't these, a lot of these pieces were not in place.
Right.
So, so that is something that needs to be taken, uh, seriously.
And, you know, th, this is the biggest part in Section 6, emergency preparation. The training drills and exercises that, you know, they have to take place. You know, responding, responder training for members. We actually had a really good year this year with our training drills. Matter of fact, the police actually, um, said to me, like, this was one of the best years that they've had when it comes to, um, our drills and how they took place last year.
Excellent.
In both the middle school and the high school. And I, you know, I, I do have to commend the, um, our, our safety, security team that, you know, we, we did have some high, we had some high-level incidents last year. And the response that they, that they went into, like one of them, one of the big ones, I was at another school when it took place and it, they took care of it. And when I got here, it was taken care of. So I, I do know that there's still holes and there are those areas that we have to improve on. But, you know, having the plan, making sure that we follow the drills, that we're doing the drills with fidelity, I think we're on the right track.
Excellent.
Um, going through some of the top. And these are some of the strategies that we, that we like to have in our buildings, district, uh, safety strategies in all buildings, impl, obviously our implementation of our school sec, security monitors. Um, our local police department has been awesome to us. We also have, um, Officer Zerbal as our school resource officer again, and we're going to be tapping more into her.
And she will be here in the district, correct?
She will be in the district this year.
That's great.
Um, and we're going to be tapping into her for more of her resources and more of her support and background to be able to help lead us in, in some of our initiatives when it comes to safety. Um, we also have our resource monitors and lunch aids that are assigned to appropriate times and places. Um, our surveillance cameras, I do, I'm proud to say that we have a contract with, um, Linstar. All of the cameras that were out here at the high school, um, will be online. They, the PO has been cut and they are ready to roll. The guy was here the other day checking the areas out. There's been, I guess he said like for the last five, six years, there's been a lot of cameras that have been out and we've identified all of those and that should be online, hopefully. Do you know exactly when they will be online? The cameras for the Linstar for the high school? Okay. And we did, and we got a grant, we got a grant last year for a $25,000 grant that we were able to get cameras at the middle school in high, high need areas. And that, that worked.
Am I on?
Oh, yeah. So also, um, we are also in the midst of a, um, the beginning planning of the Smart Bond. And a lot of, a big part of that Smart Bond is, uh, security, safety technology. One of the things that happened last year is, um, our, our team went down with, um, what's the name of the company? Intrologic.
Oh, yeah.
And Intrologic is, is, uh, it's funny because I get calls all the time from vendors trying to sell products and every time I bring up Intrologic, they're like, oh boy, here we go again. But they are like the big boys on the block in the nation. They took us down to Plain Edge in Long Island and the, the, um, the technology that they have is out of this world. It was, it was really good to see, Mr. Willoughby was there, Ms. Robinowitz was there. We were able to see, uh, a very high level of security, cameras, phones, windows, doors, and, and protocol. And the big thing in schools, as you know, is actually getting, is when the people get into the school. And the, the theme at most high-level secure schools, you can't get in. So one of the things that, that was very, um, interesting and eye-opening was the vestibules that they have set up. That you have to walk in the vestibule and then you get, you have to turn your license in. They have a visitor management systems where you have to put your thumb in there and they, and you're in the, um, national database for, for sex abuse folks, um, through the FBI. And they take your picture, they have that face technology where they take your picture one time and it goes into the registry. So wherever you are in the system, it is pretty unbelievable. So that's a part of, that's a part of that technology that hopefully we'll be able to bring to the district down the road when it comes to, uh, the Smart Bond project.
Um, Coach Hodge, can I ask a quick question about school IDs? What's the plan this year for rolling out?
So our, our school IDs is, um, we're in a CAS system. I do believe the middle school has been, um, actually now uploaded into the system. So basically, most of our students that are already in the high school, that, you know, coming in 10th graders and above, most of them should have their IDs already from last year. The plan this year is, um, getting the ninth graders, the new ninth graders coming in and any, and any other scene, other students that aren't in the system. We have the CAS system and it's ready to roll.
Way back for our middle schoolers.
So the middle school, the, the middle school, I'm not, I'm not 100% um, clear if they're ready to roll because it was they're ready to roll because it was, uh, something with the software IP address.
Isn't it your job to be clear?
On, yeah, well, I talked, I talked, I talked, I talked to CAS yesterday and I asked them and there was a, uh, Mr. Our IP internet guy, what's his name? Jim?
Sure.
The, our, the IP guy that, he comes in, Jim? Our internal computer guy, Jim. What's his last name? Oh, Mr. Early. So, I got a call yesterday from the school secretary at the middle school and she asked me if, this was like a week ago, if the middle school was gonna be online with CAS. And at the time, they were not online with CAS. Because the rollover from, for the IP addresses to get onto the system were not complete. So, I do not believe, I know, I know we now have, it's approved for the middle school to have it because it was a budgetary issue at first. Now, I believe that they are approved. I think there's a, it's an IP issue right now.
Okay, so, we have been hearing this for two years now. My daughter is now headed into ninth grade. Her ID badge for the middle school is a Life Touch ID badge that's, that's issued when the students have their school pictures taken. And it's the same one that she had when she started sixth grade. So, excuse my demeanor, but I'm having a really, this has been, I, I bring this up every single year. Not only are their ID badges not current, they don't get them until December. She's walking around with a badge that doesn't even look like her because she's now going into ninth grade, which really, um, has me be concerned about the fact that this is one of the things, like I said, we were told last year by the interim superintendent that this was going to be handled and that it was going to be done. And it wasn't done. And I, I mean, no disrespect, but my feeling is, it's your job to know exactly what's being done in any of our buildings at any given moment. And that you're not positive has me very concerned.
Up until last year, the middle school was never on the CAS system, so they were never getting ID cards.
No, I know they weren't on it, but we were told over and over and over that they were going to be.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
So, Board Member Clifford, now that this has been brought to my attention, I can guarantee you that this will be addressed.
Thank you. Because the other thing to take notice of is that, let's also recall that last year, we entered into an agreement with the county for our students to ride the buses. And what they were supposed to use to get on the buses was their school ID. And many of them didn't have school IDs. And any student who came into the middle school last year as a new student who happened to miss picture day, didn't have a school ID. So, they weren't being allowed on the bus because we didn't do our job as a school district.
Ms. Rabinowitz?
Sure. What I was going to say is, one of the things that, um, technology and security have been working with and as we move ahead, is we right now have a lot of systems and they don't talk to each other. And that's one of the things, should I stand up?
Please, ma'am, thank you.
Um, we, last year was when I came as part of the assessment, we have a lot of various systems who do lots of different things and they do the same thing and they don't talk to each other.
Don't do that, ma'am.
And that's part of the problem. And we are working and we're gonna continue to work with Mr. Hodge because basically, students and staff should have one login, login to all the programs. Students' ID cards, they should all be connected into the student information system and data should flow back and forth. So, with, with Mr. Hodge saying that he's not sure, he truly is not sure because currently that is the status. But as we move ahead and continuing to work together, that will really be a thing of the past. And the, the student IDs now, the photos just have to be uploaded because there's a lot of manual processes that are happening instead of automated processes. But as we continue to work together and move ahead, we can get things becoming more automated. So, I'll work with Mr. Hodge to help that.
And I, I.
Thank you.
I am, excuse my frustration, um, but we're, we're always saying that, you know, it, it's really time to, to talk real. Let's get real. Um, and as a parent and as a board member, I'm tired of things being sugar coated and then not happening and then not happening. So, give us the real deal.
Absolutely. So, what I was, if, if, I don't know if that was, the question was directed to me or just in general?
No, it was.
Okay, yes. But the real deal is currently, we have systems that don't talk to each other and we're gonna work closely together to get the systems to speak to each other so data will flow back and forth.
Thank you.
So, if I can share, you know, not only for the board members, but just for the public in general, one of the things I shared with the administrators when I met with them on Monday was that it's going to be imperative that what we say, we actually put into action. We all can say that we're going to do A, B, and C and people will appreciate hearing that, but people will appreciate even more the action that serves as the outcome of what we say we're going to do. I hold myself accountable to that. I'm going to hold the administrators accountable to that. And my expectation is that they're gonna hold themselves accountable for that as well.
So, so the plan moving forward for cars, to get back to your question, is I do know as a fact, the high school incoming eighth graders, they are ready to roll. Hopefully, they've worked, they've worked out the IP issue for the middle school because they've never had it before. But I do know that that, that has been rectified. They paid the fee to have the CAS system at the middle school. I've been asking for that for over a year.
Yes.
Myself. So, as we, as we move forward and our goal, hopefully, obviously, because we do use a public bus and that is, that's the tool that they would like for us to utilize for our students to get on a bus, hopefully, we can have that ready to roll for all of our middle school students as well.
And let me, let me just rephrase that for you. Not hopefully.
Yeah, we will, we will, we will, we will. We definitely will have that because I know we've already paid them the, the money for CAS and it's ready to go. I, like she said, I think they were having some, it, it's just like our, our, our system here at the high school. The system at the high school, the company doesn't exist anymore. So, when we have to, um, get things fixed here at the school, we have to find other companies that can give us software to talk to our stuff. So, our, our goal is, we will have the middle school onboard with the CAS system.
And let me just say this too, with the bonds, the Smart Bond Act, the funding that we're anticipating receiving from that funding source, we're really looking to do a complete overhaul on some of the antiquated systems that have existed in the Poughkeepsie City School District for far too long. We're hopeful that that money will then be able to give us the 21st century protections that we need to ensure that our students remain safe and that their parents who care very much for them, as well as us as educators who care very much for them, are also, are all assured that the students will be safe, either to and from school or once they get to our schools.
And I'd also like to say, when we went on that, um, trip to Intrologic, we also had them come here and they did an audit of every building. And the, the main theme that came out of their audit was the age of all of our doors and our windows. So, they basically said, that was one thing that, that, that stuck in my brain, they said that we're talking about millions of dollars of upgrading our windows and our doors because what they said is, they'd be happy to come here and put technology on it, but they're not prepared for it. So, that's one of the areas that, you know, when, when that smart bond money really comes in, we really, you know, with our construction team, we really have to take a look at making sure that we update pretty much the whole infrastructure of our buildings to be able to be 21st century.
Right.
And not just put it, put it on there and it doesn't work.
Right.
So, to end it here, we, we do utilize metal detector technology.
Do you, I'm just gonna ask you the question that I'm sure everybody's probably, are they all working right now?
Yes. They are, our metal detectors work pretty much every day. We get a lot of misinformation from people that aren't qualified and certified to work the, um, metal detectors. Um, we've trained all of the administrators and guards to be able to recalibrate the machines. The issue with, uh, metal detectors, and this was something that, and it was pretty eye-opening to me, the, um, if you look at the data on schools that really have strong security, there's no metal detectors. There's less than 3% of schools in America that use metal detectors. So, you can't really rely on metal detectors. But since we use metal detectors, we're gonna use them with fidelity and they actually work for us. It, it actually did work for us. The contraband that we've, um, taken in over the last year worked. So, one of the, one of the areas, like Mr. Murphy is here, he's one of the people that we trained. And it's, it's basically a situation where somebody might look at it and just not really understand what they're looking at. And as far as calibrating it, and he can tell you, it's a very simple process.
Well, my, my concern really is that because we rely on them, right, we use them and then when we're down to one, and this is really just from hearing chatter last year.
Just the time of people coming in.
Yeah. And, and the flow of kids getting into school is then staggering.
And so, let me, let me, let me tell you that. The reason why that is, they don't want 10 there. They seem that it, they think that it's quicker for them to be able to, that's their system. So, the way that they're doing it at the high school is they'll have like three or four people there checking bags and they can do that a lot quicker than having two or three people at two or three different metal detectors. So, that's really not the issue. We run them through here, they're done. And they're doing them with fidelity, I'm out there watching them. They're like, when we caught the gun, it was done with fidelity. You know, so, so that's not the issue. That might be someone, one day when they came up and there might be 10 kids there, but they're, they're knocking the kids out. They're getting them, they're getting them through pretty quick. No, none of our kids are getting to school late because of the metal detectors.
And what about in the middle school?
Same thing. Same, same exact thing. Go ahead.
And I have a question.
Yes.
Are, are our staff, so are our security staff being trained?
Yes. On the metal detectors?
And everything else. Because I'll, I'll be honest, I was behind Detective Leibert when he walked in a metal detector with a gun and it never went off.
So, as far as the middle school goes, I'm gonna answer the middle school question. Um, just like with the high school, when the metal detectors, uh, were instituted and started being used, um, obviously, within a new system that takes place, it's, there's gonna be a learning curve that goes along with it, especially with the security staff manning it at the lobby. So, when it was identified, the fact that, um, there were occasions of student backup, uh, especially on days where we were short staff and short security staff. When you have two people ushering in a thousand students, there is gonna be a backup. And we can't control callouts and when people are not reporting to work. However, that being said, when it was identified, then additional administrative staff and others were brought down to the lobby, just like with the high school, to add tables for bags to be checked by our hands so that we can, uh, get those students who were waiting in longer lines into the building faster. Um, and again, it, it was new to us this year. So, it did take a little bit of a learning curve, but I think after we addressed that situation of some, uh, pileups in the lobby and additional personnel was put down in the lobby to get the bags checked faster, after that, there were no instances at all. And I didn't miss a day of work outside of May 14th this last year. I was at work every single day. So, I was in the lobby in the auditorium when that was taking place.
No, I'm just asking.
And to, to address that, so, early on, early on with the metal detectors, and one of the things that, that we even had a little learning curve with the metal detectors is, as you know, as you can imagine, they are very sensitive. So, if metal detectors are bumped or pushed the wrong way or it even can be unplugged, that's the part, that's why they were taught on what to look for. So, I think a lot of that was corrected.
Okay.
And one of the areas I am, uh, it happened also at a basketball game. We did, we had a policeman from another school, I won't say what school district.
I'm there, yeah.
Okay. Caught the gun. Caught the gun. So, our, our metal detectors work. Our metal detectors work. Now, we still have to have ongoing, um, professional development for our staff to make sure that they know what they're looking for. Also, I'm really not in love with our metal detectors. So, let's just say out of 10, we, you know, on a level of expense and the level of where they are, they're probably like level four. You know? So, it, it is a decent metal detector, but I'm also looking at some other, um, equipment that we'd be able to utilize to help us.
Um, Mr. Murphy, and well, this is for, um, Dr. Rosser really, so, uh, specific to being proactive, uh, people will call out and so we cannot have that as an excuse that folks calling out, where there should not be backup, especially during the winter months with our young people. So, that's something that we have to proactively work on and have a system in place that, um, uh, you know, that if, if folks aren't there, because I know that during the, the bookbag debacle, we had, um, there were a variety of individuals there and we weren't, it wasn't something that we were on our A-game with. We were building our wings as we were flying and, and, and that's, um, and that's not how we wanna operate. We wanna be proactive and, um, when it comes to emergency management and when it comes to the execution of, of daily operations, when it comes to our students regardless of the situation. So, and I know that now with, um, permanent leadership under Dr. Rosser, that that should not be a case. Uh, we were at that six o'clock AM meeting trying to, um, come up with solutions regarding things that, uh, should have been systematically in place already. And as I listened, I was appalled by the, the conversation that was ensuing, one, that late in the year and that we were such novices when it came to some one-on-one situations that we should've been on our A-game with. So, that is something. And Dr. Rosser, I, I will actually share, I, I, it's not something that I've shared with you, but that is something I would like to share with you, just that whole process so that we can make sure that we, we have A, B, C, D, E, F, G plans in place regarding everything when it comes to emergency management. Because I know, and I remember, trustee Clifford, you, you, you had, um, texted me that there were a ton of kids that were outside waiting to get in and these are, and these are things that, um.
And walking away.
And walking away.
So, what happens is, they see the line and they walk away. They leave and they don't go into school.
Okay.
Right. So, at that time, when that was identified and we had those early morning meetings, um, you know, with Dr. Watson and other, uh, board members and, um, staff members throughout the district, um, that was a time when, irregardless of not having the appropriate staff members present, we were able to, um, manage with more administrators and other staff and have that manpower in place of the security staff not being present. So, that was roughly about the same time, um, that we added our own in-house personnel to make up for the difference of, uh, those who were not present at work that day. And I, I do wanna say that after that practice was instituted, we didn't have that issue thereafter.
Excellent. That's wonderful.
So, it did work, yeah.
That's great.
And I thank you for your support with that.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
And also to, um, to answer your question on that, I'm working with HR to try to come up with a, um, a plan to be able to have sub guards to be, that we'd be able to reach.
Um, it's interesting that we're talking about this because I actually drove, um, at least eight of the, uh, girl swim team members to practice today in different shifts. I think I might need to get a school bus. Um, and the issue of security came up and these are both middle school and high school students. Um, and, and it was interesting to listen, so I usually just put on my driver hat and don't say anything and I didn't. Um, but one of the things that came up was the, um, and not in the, not in the middle school, um, um, situation we were talking about when the administrators were doing it. But these students have expressed concerns about our security guards not going through their bags. So, the bag comes through and this is what happens. So, since we're talking about this, um, you know, my request would be that we make sure, and I know that we have a high turnover, um, you know, we can, anyone can see that by reading board docs. I know that we have a high turnover with our security monitors, but they need to be trained how to search bags. It doesn't mean just look at the top and pass it through the table. Um, because I, what I was getting from the students was that that was a concern for them. Because yes, while I might make it through the, the metal detector, I'm, I, you know, someone could have a knife shoved in the bottom of their bag. Um, so, I just, I wanted to add that since we were actually talking about that today.
So, at the, in la, this past May, we had a training with, um, Foley Security. It's a company that we've, um, engaged in with and we're looking to even do more things with them. So, one of the things, one of the part of their training that they had for all of So one of the things, one of the part of their training that they had for all of our security, that was one of the areas that I asked our trainer that he could cover, and one of the things I specifically asked him was visitor management, people, you know, searching, people coming through the metal detectors, and that was an area that was covered. And that was, that was this past May.
And keep in mind, as I mentioned when I spoke earlier, that my intent is to strengthen our relationship with local law enforcement, and I know that they're poised to assist us as a school district in making sure that we have protocols that can be utilized with a high level of fidelity to make sure that our students, our staff members, as well as other community members that might be joining us or participating in activity in our schools are safe.
Any questions?
I have a few.
Go ahead.
And if I can say one thing, because I want the, the general public to know that, I want the general public to know that when we talk about safety and security issues in our schools, we're not talking about every Poughkeepsie City school student. In any school district, there are going to be a small population of students who present challenges. So when we talk about safety and security, and we talk about metal detectors and kids' bags being checked, we're not talking about every student posing an issue to our school's safety. We're talking about a small percentage of students. I don't want the public to think that every city of Poughkeepsie students is a safety hazard to themselves or to the entire school community. And I think that's going to be important as we sort of shift the narrative about the Poughkeepsie City School District, while we do have some challenges in the district, we're no different than any other urban, small, or large school district in the, in the state of New York, or even in the country. We have challenges, as with others have challenges. But when we speak about our children, let's make sure that we have an understanding that if we're talking about issues, we're talking about the small percentage of our population, which is no different than what any other urban school district, and I would venture to say even suburban or rural school districts are challenged with as well.
That's right. I, I would like to echo that also, Dr. Ross, you're 100% spot on. One of the negatives that happened with the Poughkeepsie City School District, is the things that happen with us, they make it to the Poughkeepsie Journal, and with our surrounding schools, a lot of times, and far worse situations are happening, but it's swept under rug, or it doesn't make the paper, so beyond the shadow of that, we want to, we wanna keep that as our focus, that the Poughkeepsie City School District is a safe institution for where children are learning and where teachers are safe. We're going to continue on that trajectory of assuring that, we're going to continue to educate ourselves through a variety of means and, and through training, professional development, as we continue to forge ahead. So thank you, Dr. Ross. Are there any further questions for Mr. Hodge, specific to emergency management or district level emergency management plan, district-wide safety plan?
Um, a couple of things. The, I work in Hyde Park, this school district, and sometime this past school year, they implemented a new policy mid-year where all of the teachers had to keep their doors shut and locked. I know that throughout the district, as we've mentioned, you've mentioned, we have a lot of old doors, we have a lot of old, you know, fixtures. Is there a policy like that within the, within our district?
No.
Okay.
The, the policy that we have is that their door, the window of their door is not obstructed.
Has to be, has to be.
Yes.
Um...
Now, I, I had a door company here this past summer to take a look at all of our doors, and, you know, he, he came in, and, and what they do is they use your existing frame, and they, they basically put a brand-new technology door in there with, with all the technology. No one can enter that room, but it's at a cost of like $3,000 a door.
Well, I can, I can speak for where I teach. I know that, if I know a lockdown's gonna happen, a drill that day, I'll lock my door in the beginning of the day, 'cause I know I don't wanna have to think about it before the actual lockdown drill, I'll know, already know that it's locked, I'll have checked it, and not wasting that time. But I think in general, I think that's really to the discretion of the teacher, whether they wanna keep their door locked or closed. Also, when you think about the traffic of students going into the hallway for bathroom, main office, whatever, it, it's a distraction, 'cause then they have to knock on the door and then be let into the classroom.
It's, it's...
Yeah. So the technology doors...
It's kinda ridiculous, because it is, it's a constant, it's a constant distraction and interruption. But I was just, because I know that there have been issues, particularly in some of our elementary schools, where teachers, you can't just shut the door and it's locked. They literally have to go outside, lock the door, and then come back in. I know it's something that we're looking at.
Yeah. As we, as we move forward with our construction plan, as far as also along with the smartphone, that will be a part of it. Door, door security will definitely be a part of that process.
And then wouldn't we also need to be, because we're not ADA compliant with our door, a lot of our doorknobs either, correct?
No.
We don't have lever...
No.
Okay. Um, the, the next question I had was, so, I was not, I did not get to see this because it was uploaded yesterday, so I didn't have time to read through it thoroughly, but while I was scanning through it here, we have six cameras at the Bolin Building. Can we put those at other schools since that building's not being used right now?
Yeah, we could take a, we could take a look at that.
If there's a need...
If there's a need for somewhere to put a camera. But you have to also remember, a lot, some of these cameras, Bolin actually has some of the better cameras, to be honest with you, so they're, they're IP cameras, so they should be able to be utilized. I can speak with Mr. Willavey about that.
And, and are they specific to external use, or can they be used within the buildings as well? Like, do we have, for instance, do we have hallways in the middle school, perhaps in the basement, that, you know, there are, there are areas where...
We, we addressed that with the, this past spring with that grant. We got all the, the high needs places covered. We got that all covered at the middle school.
So I, I just figured if we have six cameras that aren't being used...
But that is, that is a good question.
We should use them.
We should be able to repurpose those cameras.
We'll need to evaluate to see whether or not those cameras were damaged in the flood that took place, and then determine once we, if they are usable, determine whether or not those cameras will be able to be used with the current systems that are either at our high school or other places.
Because it might not talk to the system.
Right. Um, do we have a senior, the senior school security person? Is that one for the district, or do we have one in each building?
We have, we have one in the middle school and one in the high school.
Okay. Um, and then the last thing is, this came up last year, so as a middle school parent, we got a phone call regarding an early dismissal drill. And in my numerous years here in the district, I had never heard of such a thing. And the only reason I had a sense of what I thought I might, it might, I might know what it is, is because of having done an evac, a bus evac drill in Hyde Park. So it, it brought to mind two things. One, I know at least with some of the elementary schools, we do our evac drills at the end of the year, and, and I'm not sure what, whose discretion that falls under, whether it's, you know, a district-wide or a principal's decision...
We actually follow this, we're supposed to follow the state policy, and you have to have X number of drills done.
I understand that, but my, my, my request is that we look at doing that evac drill at the beginning of the school year. That evac drill, in particular with our elementary school students, for instance, Krieger students have to walk numerous blocks to get over to St. John's Church.
Right.
To be doing an evac drill in May or June, it would, to me, would make more sense if it was done at the beginning of the year, because we do want them to have muscle memory, we do want them to be familiar with, you know, these drills so that we're not all in panic mode.
Do you have an elementary principal here?
And then I, I also know that last year, we did a, the district sent out, along with the code of conduct, or the district-wide safety plan, or both, sort of sent out a synopsis, a synthesized page of everything. I think it would be beneficial to, to all of our parents and guardians to know what exactly the distinctions are with drills.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a one-pager. I have it, if you don't have it, I have it.
We have it, we have it, we have that.
Thank you, Mr. Hodge, I appreciate it.
Mr. Hodge, can you also make sure that that one-pager is posted to our website?
Website, yes.
So parents, and not only the district website, but each individual school's website as well.
Yeah, we'll get that on there.
Thank you.
Okay.
Are there any further questions from our community, from our audience, from our teachers, our administrators, our staff?
Can I add one more thing? I'm sorry, I'm dragging this out. There is, and, and I, I wanted to bring this to your attention and Dr. Ross's attention. This, this, I was made aware of this a couple of years ago, and actually last year I had emailed the interim superintendent, as well as the building principals and, and Mr. Hodge. It's called the Sandy Hook Promise, and it's, say something, resources. So they have a program where they actually come in free of charge, particularly in the middle schools and the high schools, and they, they train, they do a train-the-trainer program, to show teacher, students and teachers, the particular students in grade six through 12, what the warning signs are to look for and the signals for threats.
Okay.
And they've had quite a bit of success nationwide with the program, because it's all anonymous, and it's done in conjunction with, with local law enforcement, and there's no cost to the district. And I, I just, I'd really love it if it's something that we could, it doesn't even have to, you know, a parent could take it on it, it, but I think it would be very beneficial. I think it would give our, our students a, a little bit more of a feeling of power when it comes to, if I knew what to look for, I could say something to someone, and I wouldn't necessarily have to...
Is it like an assembly-based program?
No, it's a, it's a digital program that they use, and I'll send you the link, I'll send you the link, Dr. Ross.
I have it, I have it right here.
Okay. Um, like I said, they come in and train, they'll do assemblies, but then they're, they also have information and not, like, you know, a number, so that there's a, there's a, what's the word I'm looking for? You know, almost like a, a central number that you would call, like, if, if Andrew texted me and said, "Oh my gosh, I'm gonna kill myself," I could, there's a number I could call 24/7, and, and I could report that, and then it would be followed up on...
So there's a number of third-party products that provide that opportunity and access to students who have great need, who may be considering harming themselves. And one of the things that I plan to do, as I continue to evaluate the strengths and the weaknesses of the district, is to determine what sort of supports we have in the district to support students that have that great need, and if we need a third-party, a third-vendor product, then make the recommendation to the board after we thoroughly investigate whether or not it would behoove us as a district, and not only that, if it would be utilized among our student population. And of course, that's going to come through hearing directly from our students and students sharing with us, the sort of things that we can provide them to support their youth development.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions? Thank you, Mr. Hodge. At this time, is there a motion to convene back into our regular meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, motion carries. At this time, we're going to allow for citizens' comments.
Hi, my name is Cornelia Harris, I live at 40 South Randolph Avenue. I wanted to take a minute to, I've talked with some, several people in the room about this. On Monday, actually on Sunday, I found out that there's no aftercare in the district until October 7th. I talked to Family Services, they said it was a district decision, I've spoken with Ms. Torres, she corrected me, I, I don't know whose decision it was, but parents are understandably, myself included, having a bit of a, you know, what, my kid gets out of school at 2:10 at Krieger, and there's no physical way I can get him, and I was relying on that. I applied over the summer to the program, I thought it was gonna be in place, and so we're, we're scrambling. And I'm gonna be able to, I'm, I'm positive, I will find someone, I can pay to take care of my kid for the next month after school, but not all of our families are in that situation. I went over to the Krieger Elementary School Monday morning and spoke with the principal, he wasn't aware of the change, and he's concerned he's gonna have several hundred kids on his hands whose parents are assuming that the program is continuing. You know, last year it started on day three of school, so, yeah, a lot of us are concerned. There's the Empire Program, I spoke with, with Mario yesterday, it's a separate thing, I'm aware of that, so, but that also isn't starting until October, so, and it's only gonna be Monday through Thursdays now. So I work every day, I don't know people, I, I know everyone's all over the place, but it's, it's really tricky, so that's my comment for right now.
And if I can just comment real quick, it was brought to my attention yesterday that there was a lot of misinformation that was being articulated throughout many communities within Poughkeepsie, one of which was that the school district had made an arbitrary decision to discontinue an after-school program. In my investigation, with talking to staff members, particularly Mr. Johnson and Dr. Tendike, I was informed that this is not a program that the district is, is sponsoring per se. So understanding that this is creating some challenges for our families, I asked Mr. Johnson to contact Family Services to get to the crux of this miscommunication, and Mr...
That's what they're telling us, so, when we call them.
Right. So, and I, I shared with Mr. Johnson that please make sure that you're having conversations with the program directors there, two of which who are leading the program, who are relatively new in their roles, and who don't necessarily understand, you know, what was there before them, and unfortunately, may have been, and I'm just simply saying "may have been" because I didn't hear it come directly from them, may have been articulating incorrect information, but we as a school district have not made an arbitrary decision to discontinue any after-school program, and I want Mr. Johnson to sort of share in a few, few words or two, just exactly where we're at with that, that program, that is being no longer continued in our district.
Yes, Family Services operated an advantage grant that started in September of last year, and pretty much they decided to apply for advantage grant funding again, but this time it's gonna be at the Early Learning Center, as well as at the Family Partnership Teen Track Center. So the after-school program that we know that started in September and operated throughout the year is not gonna be at Clinton and Krieger. However, the ELT, or the Empire Grant that I'm responsible for, that will be starting October 7th as, you know, as scheduled. So unfortunately, it's not gonna cover all five days, it will cover Monday through Thursday from pretty much two hours a day, from 2:30 to 4:30. So there still is that challenge for some working families, but again, I talked to Family Services, they're gonna let the public and the community know that this program's not gonna be offered. The Advantage Grant program at Krieger and Clinton will not be offered this fall. That's what we stand at.
You, you said the Advantage Grant will not be offered at all?
At the Krieger and Clinton, it'll be offered...
Through Family Services?
Yes, they're waiting for their final approval, approval and their SAC license for the Early Learning Center, and also at the Teen Track Center at the Partnership. Yeah, well, they're supposed to be correcting that, and I'll make sure I look at it.
Yeah.
Yes, I was waiting for a communication from them, I did not receive it as of today, but I will definitely be talking to the executive director, Brian Doyle, to find out, you know, how they're gonna alert the other families that did participate in their program last year.
But, but let's, I wanna be very clear with our community, with those that are perhaps watching, is that the advantage piece, this Family Service piece is exclusive from the school district. They ran it within our schools, but it's a separate program, a separate funding source that Family Services had, correct?
That is correct.
And they were charging, is, is, is what I'm told by parents.
Excuse me?
They were charging, as I'm told by some parents.
I've heard, I heard rumors of that, but I did not see any of that, but I know if we explore that, I was told that that could be a possibility. And again, that program, Advantage as well as the ELT, they are free programs to the community and to parents.
And, and then... And then with the Empire Grant that you oversee, that begins October 7th, you said that it's going to be housed, one is going to be at the Early Learning Center, but we're waiting for the SAC license in order to do, to have the program run there?
Our ELT, our Extended Learning Time Program will operate throughout all the schools, and that will be including Family Services. The issue came in play where Office of Children and Family Services, New York State, said you cannot operate an Advantage Grant as well as an Empire Grant in the same building.
Right.
Because of the issue of code-mingling and double-counting and things like that. So, that's why Family Services had to use the Early Learning Center and the Teen Track Center at the Family Partnership, because under the new rules of the Advantage Grant, they couldn't do both in the same building.
And so, they will run their program at the Early Learning Center, or they will not? Do you know?
Will they do what?
At the Early Learning Center.
The Advantage Grants.
Yeah.
But they have to wait for SAC approval, correct?
That's correct.
School-age childcare, and that takes a while.
Yes, and they're hoping to have that in October.
It usually takes a while to have that, for that certification, just FYI.
That's correct. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Other citizens' comments? There being none, we're going to move to our superintendent's report.
So, thank you very much, everyone, for being patient this evening. I know it's a little warm in here, my superintendent's report will be relatively quick. I do know that we will have Ms. Harris providing a presentation on the PTA at the ELC, but prior to her doing that, I would like to share that myself and a few board members had the wonderful opportunity of joining a number of constituents or community-based stakeholders at Harvard this past Friday and Saturday, and we had a wonderful opportunity to discuss ways in which we can strengthen our collaboration, to increase the type of support our students and our families and the city of Poughkeepsie deserve. We will be having ongoing conversations, and not only are we going to engage in ongoing conversations, we're going to actually put our words into action so that our students and our families will benefit from the collaborative efforts that we are going to engage in this upcoming school year. So, Ms. Harris, are you ready? And before she gets started, we will make it a point to keep the community abreast of everything that we do as a school district in collaboration with our community partners under the Harvard Initiative.
Great. So, hi again, my name is Cornelia Harris. I am the outgoing PTA president for the Early Learning Center at Smith School, and I wanted to take a minute to share with you what we accomplished last year and what we hope to do in the coming year. I don't have a student there this year, but I'll have another one the year after next. So, I think it's important to remember why we do what we do, and I absolutely fell in love with the kids at the school this year. And so, the vision, you know, the reason we have PTAs is to support kids in enrichment and in supporting our schools and just doing, you know, more, doing more, doing better. And these kids got to get some of those opportunities because of the strength of our PTA. So, there's some pictures of them on some field trips and some science enrichment stuff that we were able to do. But what I'm going to quickly run down, and I'm very aware of the time, is, you know, PTAs matter, especially in a district like ours. We've been able, as a ELC PTA, we've been able to raise over $11,000 for the school library. Uh huh, thank you. We've maintained the school garden there, we wrote grants for field trips and facilities, we advocated for water fountain funding, we raised over $1,000 for recess gym, music, and art supplies, we advocated for building improvements and child-centered schedule changes, and we held several school-wide events to build community and support our staff, all of our staff. So, when I first got to the ELC and I walked up to the library, this is what I saw, and I was fairly heartbroken. These are our districts, these are the babies in our district, they're four and five years old, everybody goes there, and this was the state of their library. So, we decided to do something about it, and we started with a very, what we thought was a very small fundraiser at Barnes &amp; Noble, and we just started in March. We had a Saturday in March where, you know, Barnes &amp; Noble has these fundraisers, and we thought, we'll make a couple hundred dollars, it'll be great, it'll be a way for the community to get together, and people came out in force. And all of a sudden, I'm meeting people in the community who are willing to give us thousands of dollars, and they have done that. I didn't know these people before, they just showed up, and they said they wanted to help. People really want to help if it's something that's concrete and they know that they can see a result from this. We started a GoFundMe page on the advice of some of our community members, that you can see, I just took a snapshot last night, or Monday, of the total that's been raised there. We also have a website now called The Book Hive, that's what we've decided to call the project, so we're going to keep going. Our goal is $20,000 for books, and then another 20 for furniture, and we'll see where we land.
What is the GoFundMe page, what is the title for it?
It's just called Books For Our Library.
Books For Library? Okay.
Yeah, Mary invented, my names are not my.
That's on Facebook?
I've posted it on Facebook a bunch, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. And, you know, we've met other community groups this way, CM2 came through, I met Stacy Bottoms a couple weeks ago, she's posting about it, so people are keeping, you know, they're finding out about it, and hopefully we'll keep working on it. The books have started to come in, Ms. Rabinowitz has been essential in making sure that that happens, and hopefully we'll fill up that library for those, for those kids. With facilities, as you all know, we have a number of challenges in our district, and these are some of the challenges in our building. We have leaking roofs, and we had, had, past tense, a playground that was struggling a bit. The roof issue, I know, is a long-term thing, I'm just reminding us that it's there. And, look at our beautiful playground. So, Mr., yes. Mr. Willoughby's staff was great in bringing mulch and more mulch and more mulch, when I kept saying we need more mulch. And so, we have beautiful play space for the kids. Just to put a bug in your ear, it would be awesome to have that playground open all the time for community members to use, like the other, some of the other schools are. Kids right now, they've cut a hole through the fence so that they can play in the summer, which isn't really very safe. So, just, I know it's not high on the priorities, but just something to think about. The other thing we worked on.
One second, Ms. Harris, is there a reason why we lock it? Dr. Ross, do you know?
It's the preference of the administration in.
Oh, it's the preference of the administration of the building.
Well, the one thing I want to look into as well is to determine what liability the district may have in the event that a child from the community gets hurt. It's not to say I'm against it, but we do need to make sure that, you know, we're protected as a district, but also providing opportunity and access for our children. So, we're going to look into that as well.
Right, so we're not consistent right now because Krieger's is open all the time? So, that's part of the reason a lot of parents are like.
Wondering why.
Yeah, and then, you know, kids are just in there, they just are, they find a way over.
But what we don't want is children, yeah. Because I remember when I was a youngster, I used to climb the fence, not cut, we didn't have, you know, cable cutters to cut the fence, we used to climb the fence in order to be able to play on the basketball court or on the swing sets or the slides.
Yeah, it's a great, it's a beautiful playground. The other thing we worked on a lot, as most of you know, is the water. I'm going to keep pushing on this, I would love to see the new water fountains installed in all of our buildings soon, so that we use the money from Assembly Jacobson appropriately and responsibly. Yeah, the water fixtures in the ELC, there are two sinks that are still concerns for me, so I'm hoping that those will get dealt with soon. The PTA maintained the school garden, it's the largest school garden in the district. The kids use it for all sorts of things, mostly just digging, because they need to dig in the dirt, and it's been really fun. We had some Vassar students who came and volunteered and led some school, you know, led some classes out there, and it's been really, it's been a really fun thing. We could use some additional support from buildings and grounds to mow in the garden area, because at this point, as of Monday, the weeds were almost up to my waist, so it needs to get mowed in the middle. That would be great. We did a bunch of school-wide events, and we had amazing teacher support at our PTA this year, which was fantastic. We couldn't have pulled this stuff off without our teachers. We did a special, someone special dance, special someone, I can't remember what we called it, and we did a spring celebration with all sorts of activities and events for the kids, including that wildlife guy who's holding an alligator, so that was really fun, or a crocodile, I'm not exactly sure. So, I think what our PTA did really well, we were responsive to our parents, we worked really hard to be transparent, and we set up systems so that that can go forward. So, we now have a dedicated email account, Facebook page, a dedicated phone number that we pay a small amount for every month, and we have a remind text service, so that way we can stay in communication. We have monthly meetings at the same time, same place, we publish our minutes and share those, we brought our PTA into compliance because it was not, and I had no idea how much went into that when I said I'd do it. But what is really important, I think, that our PTA did, and I hope we can be a model for other PTAs, is we did everything in English and Spanish. And I know enough Spanish, but we also have amazing administrators at the ELC who are bilingual, and so we held all of our meetings in both languages, and that was allowed a lot more parents to come in the door. And we followed up with parents in lots of different ways. If they came to one meeting, they got a note before the next meeting, or they got a phone call from me to remind them that we would love them to come. And we encouraged them to get involved in lots of different ways. If that meant just coming for an hour to help set up something, then that was awesome. So, I think that all of this really matters because it builds trust within our school community, and those networks of trust extend beyond just what happens in our school to the larger Poughkeepsie community. And I've met a lot of really amazing people this year who really believe in our district and want us to succeed and work towards equity across the board. And I think it sets a standard of involvement and inclusion upwards, right? So, if we can do what we did at the ELC at all of the elementary schools, and we keep following that up, parents will know that that's the standard, and they know that there's a PTA that they can go to, to voice their concerns and to get results. So, that's what I'm really hoping for, for the future. So, some of my just personal ideas is to work with the, I always mess up this name, golly, Poughkeepsie Public Schools Foundation, yes, that that might be a place to help do some fundraising work with broader efforts to support what is happening in our school district, develop strong PTAs at every school, I think we really need that. I think having PTAs at Friday Night Lights would be amazing, to have food, have childcare, appropriate childcare, even for the four- and five-year-olds, that might be a little challenging, but I think parents would come if we did that. And we really need to do a better job of training and supporting our PTAs. I had a lot of support from Steph Green last year, and I texted her a lot for questions, but there's not a good network right now for existing PTA parents. And I really want to make sure that we're encouraging all families to be involved, especially our Lautino families, because I think they have a lot to offer and don't, their voices aren't always heard. And find some way to celebrate our PTA volunteers, you know, we went out this summer as a group, but within the district also, to make sure that those parents that are really working hard, and the staff members too, who come out after work to hang out with us, it's pretty, pretty awesome. So, that's it, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Harris. I look forward to when we meet in a few weeks for, to really go a little bit deeper in your ideas for the future, and to really learn from you the sort of steps you took to create the type of PTA at the ELC that we're looking to have in all of our schools, so that we can then replicate some of your best practices throughout our districts.
And then, as a Board of Education, your last bullet point, which was to honor the PTAs in general, the board would be interested in how we can partner with you, any ideas that you have, that we could help celebrate the successes that PTAs are doing, so we'll be happy to hear that. I do know that the board clerk did reach out to each of the PTAs in each building, and unfortunately, you were the only one that came through, and we want to commend you for your tenacity. You're extremely persistent, you're not a, you're trying to be showboating in the face of things, you just get it done, and I've watched you in a variety of ways with the water piece, and then also with the garden, just watching how you were with your children there, it was very impressive just seeing you in action. And while you are to be commended, in sync with what Dr. Ross is saying, it's important for us to duplicate what you've done and to learn what you've done, so that we can assure that it is implemented and sustained in each of our elementary schools. So, thank you so very much. Let's give her another hand for the great work that she's done. One person does matter.
Yeah.
And Mr. Schloick is kind of, he looks like he has a check in his hand.
Wow. So, this is from the Early Learning Center PTA, paid to the order of the City of Poughkeepsie School, $5,000 for the ELC library.
And that's major, that, to me, that's just amazing. When I look at what's being done, it's amazing. We have to continue to duplicate and to look at what was done and how we can duplicate that, because I don't know so much about PTAs, it's been a lot of years since I've personally been involved in a PTA, and when I hear results like that, those are demonstrable results that we need to duplicate, especially with our dire need within our school system. So, thank you so much, Ms. Harris, for all the fine work that you do as an individual, your family, and then those that you've partnered with and worked with, and then to those who have been donating, all those that have participated in the GoFundMe page and.
Thank you.
And increasing that, thank you so very much for your interest and your commitment to the Poughkeepsie City School District. What I would like to do is to ensure that a press release is put, because if something negative was happening, we would hear about it. So, let's celebrate the successes, so why don't we get a press release together, talking about the fine work that's being done in this regard, and let's send this into the Poughkeepsie Journal, let's see if Ryan or some of the others, the food and drink reporter.
Jeffrey.
Jeffrey Wilson or someone would cover that, right, Dr. Ross?
Definitely. So, Madam President, that concludes my report.
Thank you so very much, sir. At this time, I believe we're going to move into consent agenda, but let me just be 100% sure. Yes, we're moving into consent agenda, are there items to be pulled from the consent agenda?
Yes.
Yes, you can say them.
Oh, so I would like to remove for discussion 11.14, 11.19, and 14.4.
Trustees, are there any others to be removed from the consent agenda? 11.14, 11.19, and 14.4.
14, okay.
There being none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda excluding the three resolutions that were pulled?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the agenda item 11.14?
It's all moved. So, it's.
Trustee, trustee Martinez-Leffert?
It's really the language, so just trying to understand, it says, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby appoints, I can state the name, correct?
Yes.
Because it's there. Ms. Tracy Lysko, who currently holds Professional Literacy, Birth Through Six Certification and Permanent Pre-Kindergarten, Kindergarten in Grades One through Six Certification as a reading teacher at Clinton School, replacing Ms. Gail Gemmell, who transferred to another position in the district. It says in the special subject art tenure, which I'm, it's not clear, since the teacher that's being appointed the position is Birth Through Six Reading Literacy Teacher.
So, this is, I'm not sure, that's too.
We're going to have to amend this resolution. So that's very good, trustee Martinez-Leffert, who is also a teacher, who honed right in on this. There is a slight discrepancy, and I know that, I know that Dr. Oster's been really focused on just making sure that all of these pieces, when they come over, when we cut and paste, that these small snafus, once we're in the agenda review and we go through them and it looks like it's accurate, and then when it finally gets done, things shift. So during the agenda review, this was not the case. However, we're going to have to amend this, and it says, it should read, be resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education hereby appoints Ms. Tracy Lisco, who currently holds Professional Literacy, Birth Through Six Certification and Permanent Pre-Kindergarten, Kindergarten in Grades One through Six Certification, as a reading teacher at Clinton School, replacing Ms. Gail Gemmell, who transferred to another position in the district, in the reading, in the reading teacher area at an annual salary of Master Step Ten. So we're going to have to amend it to state it as I just read, Board Clerk, Reading Teacher. And the rest of the resolution-
Reading Teacher tenure area.
Yeah, that's what I said, Reading Teacher tenure area. And the rest of the resolution will remain as is. Is there a motion to make the amendment to include for this agenda item 11.14, Reading Teacher be included in lieu of Special Subject Art tenure area?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve this resolution now that it has been amended as stated?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve Resolution Number 11.19?
So moved. So it's- Yeah, so it's another typo. If you look at the recommended action, it says be it resolved that the following individual be appointed to the following extra assignment position at Pace Columbus School for Tax Collection, but then if you look at the position below, it says greeter.
Again, this is a typo, and unfortunately, we're going to, and I know Dr. Oster, so I know you're screaming because you're so facetious, and when we're doing the gender review to ensure that we are going over all of these things and that, that when these resolutions come forward, I've heard them resoundingly say that when they come forward from the various staff member, from the various leadership, that it has to come over clean, and I know that's something that you're working on. So we need to, again, amend this, be resolved that the following individual be appointed to the following extra assignment position at Pace Columbus School for Greeter effective August 26, 2019, and extending through August 30. I know during the gender review, this was stated, and I don't know what happened here. However, we're going to make that amendment now. Is there a motion to make the amendment to include the word greeter in lieu of tax collector?
So moved.
Tax collection. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve agenda item 11.19 as read, including the amendment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And is there a motion to approve Resolution Number 14.4? Second?
Second.
Get the second on it, okay? Trustee Clifford, trustee Martinez-Leffert, discussion please.
So this looks like an awesome opportunity for, I believe it's Warring School, in September, to go visit Sharp Reservation, I believe. I know the principal is here right now. I was just wondering if when you, your school does go on this field trip, that hopefully you'll come back and then express how great the field trip is, hoping, I'm sure it's going to go great, to the other elementary school teachers, even the ELC. I don't know what the field trip consists of, but, and our other elementary schools having the possibility of going to Sharp Reservation.
Wait a minute.
Right, isn't that what it is?
Is that 14.4?
Yep.
Yeah.
So it's insurance cover?
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's for a field trip. That's what it says. So it sounds like an awesome opportunity. Thank you for looking into that.
One of the things that the Board encourages, and actually not just the Board, but policy also encourages leadership to do, is to, one, write a report and submit it, and in this case, since it's a whole school, if Ms. Coxum, if you would be so willing to do so, is to come back and perhaps do a presentation during a workshop meeting. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 14, agenda item 14.4, Resolution Number 20144?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion regarding this resolution? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We're going to move to action items. 16.1, is there a motion to approve the action item, Board of Education, Action Item 16.1?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve agenda item 16.2? Is there a second?
Second.
Correct, you're right.
Any discussion? One of the things, Board Clerk, we have to make sure, this is the approval of the Board meeting calendar, and I know that there's some changes, and there may be further changes just because life happens. So I know that you've done a really focused job on trying to keep everything up to date. So on behalf of the Board of Education, Ms. Torres, I would just like to commend you on all the fine work that you do, and trying to pull everything together and to keep everything together, because you're doing a stellar job. Not only are you doing it for the Board of Education, you're also serving as the intern without any additional salary to our superintendent. So we just want to take a moment to give you kudos and to thank you immensely for all of the fine work that you consistently do. Is there a motion to approve the resolution as is?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I might have, we might have motioned it twice, but it's okay. Is there a motion to approve agenda item 16.3?
So moved.
Any discussion? I'm super excited that we're going to be having buses again, and that Dr. Oster will be negotiating the contract. One of the things that we had asked the County Executive for Marcus Molinaro is to give us data on the usage, because we don't want to be overpaying if our students are not really using the bus. So we don't want to, if it would be less, if they just, if they were paying, if we have, say, 100 students only using the bus and we're paying for 200 students, we want to be conscious of costs and things. So I know Dr. Oster will be speaking to the County Executive's staff. Mr. Molinaro had called, and I spoke with him directly, and I said that we need data to substantiate usage of the buses, and he said that they do have that. I don't know how they have it, I'll be honest, but he said that they have it. And so, Dr. Oster, when you meet with him, that perhaps is something that you can request, so that we know that the return on our investment, our financial investment, is equal to what is actually being spent.
Yes, most certainly. I've already had two meetings, and we're anticipating on having a few more meetings to make sure that the utilization of public taxpayer dollars is being used to the best of our ability. So they have produced some data. Mr. Schloick and I had a very lengthy conversation earlier this week with them, they're going to be producing additional data. I will share with you that they're extremely excited to enter into this for the Poughkeepsie City School District students. We both see this as a great opportunity for our students to not only get to and from school, but also have opportunities to engage in extracurricular activities such as employment, making sure that they're having exposure to library services, so if they need to take transportation in order to get to the library, to research things for their high school classes, their middle school, their middle school classes, they have the ability to do so. So we're looking to really ramp up people's understanding of this valuable resource for our children, so that even more of our public school students have the opportunity to, number one, be aware of this service to them as well as to utilize it.
Now, this is just for middle and high school, correct?
Correct.
Is there, is any further discussion regarding this? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, we're going to move to Superintendent-
Madam Board President, I had a point of order. I have a question for you. If memory serves, when we, going back to the consent agenda under Category 11, we pulled 1114, 1119, and 14.4, actually, and then we separately approved them, right?
Yes.
Did we actually approve the rest of the consent?
Yes.
We did?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, that's the consent agenda. Thank you so very much, Dr. Reeser, for just making sure that we're spot on with things. Yes, we did.
All right, cool, thanks.
At this time, we're going to move to our comments, and we're going to actually start with trustee Reeser, only because he has a presentation that he would like to pull up. And so we'll start with him, and then we're going to go to Dr. Oster, trustee Clifford, trustee Martinez-Leffert, and trustee Long in that order.
Thank you, Madam Board President. I didn't want to miss the opportunity to highlight some of the great work being done by our district over the summer, and commend the teachers, principals, staff, many of whom are here in this room right now, and students who were doing that good. Where we had the summer graduations earlier tonight, that was so inspiring to see our students walk across this stage and receive their diplomas as part of the class of 2019. That's great work, and so much hard work by our staff and teachers went in to getting those students across the stage. I also wanted to highlight the work done by the City Police, City of Poughkeepsie Police Officer and our safety liaison here in the district, Karen Zerbal, who I don't know, I don't think she's here, but I want to thank her for her work in helping to organize, and I think being the principal organizer of an event, it's not a district event, but it was the Police Athletic League District, I'm sorry, National Night Out on August 6 at City Hall Plaza. It was a great event, we had a lot of fun until the rain chased us away. There were many vendors there handing out information in kiosks, there was a bouncy house, there was free food, Queen Elsa made an appearance, it was fantastic. I also want to thank Director of Family and Community Engagement, Natasha Cherry. I had the great privilege of being her wingman in the district information booth. We had a chance to meet a number of parents and students as they walked by. We handed out a survey and got some feedback about how we're doing as a district in terms of how we communicate with the community. Natasha Cherry, like, knows everyone in the City of Poughkeepsie, so it was awesome. She introduced me to a million people who I had not met, which was wonderful, so I want to thank Natasha for her work. I also had the great privilege of attending the PMS Summer Academy Hudson River Estuary Exhibition. This was essentially graduation or the capstone project for an interdisciplinary, multi-week course, about 20 students participated. These were between fifth and sixth grades, they're entering sixth grade. These kids put on, with the help of this fantastic teaching staff, and Mrs. Juliette Coxum, who's the principal at Charles Warring Elementary School, the kids put on waders, they were wading out into the Hudson River, into the estuaries and inlets, they went on five or six field trips, collecting information about the chemistry and ecology and environment of the Hudson River Basin in which we live. And then they did a panel presentation of what they learned on their trips. I got, I learned a lot about the Hudson River, the students took me through a quiz, I got a couple of my questions wrong, and so I learned from the students, who were fantastic. It was a great event. And if I could only offer one critique of it, and it's not even a critique, so enthusiastic about this wonderful program, it's possible that we could have had more students in it. We may have had excess capacity, right, in this program? And it might be a, it might just be something to put on our thinking caps for the spring about how to get the word out to more parents and more students about this fantastic opportunity, learning opportunity that these students participated in. So I didn't want to let the opportunity pass without mentioning this fantastic work this summer by the district. And that's it. Thanks very much.
Excellent, that's wonderful. It's wonderful that the Board, and make no mistake, Board members are constantly plugging into things, and we don't do it to showboat, we do it to be really a part of the solution. So, Dr. Reeser, thank you so much for sharing that information with us.
So for my comments, I want to bring special attention to some very special people that have decided to join the Poughkeepsie City School family. We have a number of new teachers who will be starting with us in September, and I want to thank them, number one, for their commitment and dedication to becoming a part of our family. We are very enthusiastic whenever we get great talent, such as new teachers coming into the district. When I say new teachers, it may be veteran teachers, but new teachers to our district. So I do want to acknowledge the new teachers that are here, and once I say your name, if you're here, please stand up. Kathleen Orza. Holly Hammond. Well, we can still clap for Holly. Lauren Carley. Still clap for Lauren. Michelle Coleman, excuse me. Shanice Mathis. Hannah Wood. And then lastly, Tracy Lisco. Okay, I remember seeing you in the hallway, and I can't remember, can you? Carly McKenna? Carolyn McKenna. Okay, Carolyn McKenna. My apologies for leaving your name off, I left another one. Oh, two Assistant Principals. New Assistant Principal, the name, please give me the name real quick. Oh, Janetti. Okay, Janetti Incarcianum. Okay, you look different. So, and my apologies, so I'm going to give myself two nights of detention in my office for making two mistakes this evening. So I do also want to, number one, thank you once again for your willingness to join our team and your commitment to the City of Poughkeepsie School students. It's an honor to have individuals such as yourselves as a part of the family. We're going to do great things together, and I look forward to visiting you in your schools in a few weeks, and also visiting you as an AP over at the Warring School. I do want to acknowledge that we do have one retirement, Kelly Latin, who has served in our district 12.5 years. So I do want to pay her special thanks for her dedication and service in our school district, more specifically to our students. Thank you very much, Ms. Latin.
I'll be brief. I can't believe school starts next week. Yay! I'm looking forward to, although I will not be able to visit schools as I have in the past on opening day, really I'm looking forward to a new school year. There's a lot going on, fantastic things on the horizon. I'm really looking forward to working with Dr. Oster. He truly is a champion for our children. We had the honor and privilege to sit here this evening while, I believe it was seven, eight, additional Poughkeepsie High School class of 2019 students walked to the stage and received their diplomas. Last year was my first experience of that, and it's amazing, it's graduation- Graduation in general is, is fantastic, and, and for me, that's what it's all about, is when we watch those students cross the stage. But for these students to actually have put in the extra time and to do it over the summer, um, so that they could join their cohort, uh, to me is just, it's very humbling, um, and I'm incredibly proud of them. Um, and it truly is, when people say this is a thankless job, it's not. Um, that's all the thanks that I personally need, is, is to see that. Um, so with that being said, welcome to our, our new, um, employees. I, again, echo what Dr. Rossiter said. Um, just thank you for being here. Thank you for being committed to our students. Um, the city of Poughkeepsie School District's kids are amazing.
So, uh, as trustee Clifford just stated, today I went into my building and I was like, I can't believe the summer has already gone by. It, I feel like every year it gets, the, the two months just get, it's faster and faster. And I don't know if it's because my kids are getting older and they're busier, and it just makes me busier, and time flies, but it is, it has really flown. Um, I'm super excited for the school year. I commend Dr. Rossiter for, uh, he's really jumped on board, and he's already tackling so many things. And it's gonna be a really exciting year as we move forward with all the changes that are gonna be happening, positive changes. And I really look forward to, unlike trustee Clifford stated, I will not be, um, I won't even be able to bring my own children to school on the first day, 'cause I will, and myself, be at school, um, you know, welcoming my own students into the classroom, so I won't be able to be a, a support, um, person in the, in seeing students enter into the buildings, uh, next Thursday, but I know it'll be great for everybody, for faculty, for teachers, staff, and children. Um, I just wanna quickly, uh, talk about the Harvard, um, program that we were at last week. I was only able to attend one day of it, um, but learning more about, uh, Children's Cabinet and Lead for America was quite inspiring. Also, to see Harvard graduates, or Harvard graduates that are graduates from the Poughkeepsie City School District present these different programs to us, uh, was pretty fantastic. Um, for them to come back to the community and to bring these programs to us, for, so hopefully we can, um, we can build some sort of relationship with these people and, and, and emulate their programs in our own district or our community. I wanna say thank you to Cornelia Harris. Um, you're pretty phenomenal in everything that you do as a full-time mom, um, worker, everything. It, it takes a lot to also run a PTA and to build a PTA. And I also want to, uh, just congratulate the graduates today. It was fantastic being a semi-new board member, um, and seeing my first class graduate in June, and then seeing this group graduate as the adding-on to the 2019 graduates in the Poughkeepsie City School District. That's all I have to say.
I too like to say congratulations to the graduates. Um, I also want to say, uh, give a special thanks. Um, if you don't know me, I'm very connected to the community, and, um, I am gonna put this out here because it's very concerning to me. Um, I've been bombarded over the last couple of days. Parents are very concerned about students not receiving schedules, not, um, knowing where their children is gonna be, particularly for the middle school, for the students who are coming in as sixth graders. This is a different type of experience for them. Um, and it really has a bad perception on the school district out in the community. So I, 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 I think it's imperative that I do mention that. I have, uh, two announcements that I wanna make, uh, um, that I promised them I would do. Snug is giving a back-to-school event this Saturday from 1:00 to 6:00. It's going to be at Pulaski Pool. The pool will be open for swimming. Um, it's free food, and they're giving away, um, school supplies. And then following their event, they're having a classic, uh, Poughkeepsie classic basketball game. This is number two. I don't know if you've ever been to any one of them. I went to the first one, and I had to tell you, it must have been a thousand people from the city of Poughkeepsie who participated, um, and it is going to be held at Tubman Park. And I'm very sleepy and I'm hungry, and I just wanna say, um, that's it. That's all I have.
Let me, can I just make a comment? So thank you very much, um, board member Long, for bringing your concern to the attention of the public. I think it's very important that we are extremely transparent in our operations, and I will share with you that I have also received telephone calls of concerns from our middle school parents indicating that they haven't heard, um, anything about their children's schedule. In my conversation with Mr. Diabalar, who was our, um, principal at the middle school, he assured me that at tomorrow night's sixth-grade orientation, that families will receive the schedules for their children, and that no later than the 30th, the seventh and eighth grade schedules will be uploaded to Infinite Campus for parents to be able to, to see. In the event that this does not occur, I encourage parents to contact Ms. Cheryl Rabenowitz to alert her, so that I can then personally visit the school to determine what went wrong.
Thanks, Dr. Rossiter.
Um, principal, assistant principal Murphy?
Yes.
Can we, uh, the... Yeah, yes, yes, the microphone, please.
So yes, just to confirm, um, I'm running the grade six orientation tomorrow night, but we, as a middle school administration, have that prepared. Um, so the, the student schedules, Ms. Long, will be, um, delivered to the sixth-grade parents and students tomorrow night. And just as Dr. Rossiter confirmed, Friday, we, as an administration, have it prepared for the seventh and eighth grade as well. I want to add, in addition to what Dr. Rossiter already stated, that there will be a roll call going out as well, informing the parents of this, um, because we know that the concerns, uh, were there, uh, which is why we wanna have that additional level of support with the roll call going out, to inform parents of when those schedules are gonna be available.
Okay, I'll, I'll let the parents know.
Please, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Trustee Long, are there further comments?
No, thank you.
Dr. Rossiter?
No further comments, thank you.
Okay. Uh, before we close, I'm going to ask all our new hires this evening, all the individuals that came on board to be a part of the Poughkeepsie City School District team, to please stand again. And let's give them another hand. And we have our PIPSTA president here, Heather Martino. Would you please stand? And we have the principal, um, who just had a new assistant principal join us, uh, Ms. Juliette Coxum, the principal of Warren Elementary School. And then we have our assistant superintendents here, Mrs. Schloica, Dr. Tindike, and we heard from Mr., uh, Coach Hodge earlier, and then we have Assistant Superintendent Manona, and, um, uh, Cheryl Rabenowitz, you've heard a lot from her, uh, the assistant to, um, to our superintendent. Uh, at this time, we're going to adjourn. Thank you also very much for coming. Thank you for the time that, um, that you've, uh, spent here. We have Mr. Stanford, too. I just wanna acknowledge Gully, since he's standing. We've missed you. We've missed you a lot. So, uh, thank you so very much for coming in, uh, Mr. Stanford, and, oh, um, Ms. Harris, thank you again. Thank you so very much for all that you do. At this time, is there a motion to adjourn out of, uh, this meeting, the public hearing, the regular meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, trustees.